City will be ready for a regular meeting at the Elmendorf City Hall at 7:00 PM, January 16th, 2020. Call to order, Plague Wigginton.
Introduce yourselves, Mr. Garrett, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We remain standing for the invitation.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain. It hasn't been pouring, pouring, and drenching everything, but it's been a good rain. We thank you for that. We thank you also for those who are present, who are exercising their right to be here, which not all countries can, not all cities can do that. So we thank you, our residents in Elmendorf and those who are visiting as well, as well as the city council, who are present, to do what they do best and work as best as they can. So we ask you for the time and the courtesy for all voices to be heard in these things. We pray, Father.
Oh, uh, let me get my hat. I want to make a brief comment about, there's a seat missing right here. Those who were able to come to the receptions of the funeral and everything, Dario was a fantastic individual. I saw him more before he was elected than any time else. We've run into great places, exclusive places like Home Depot, uh, things of that type, but he was not a pretentious man. He was a fantastic guy. One thing I really liked about him, he liked hats also, which was a neat thing. He always had a hat, not always, but he often had a hat. He clearly was an interesting individual, and he will be definitely missed. This is a situation where he was not here that long, but I'm glad that he was here for the period of time that he was. What I would like to do is to give other people, just if we had a memorial and we had an opportunity to speak at the memorial service, but if I, please let me, allow me to do this, I'd like for council people to make reference to some things that they remember of him as well. Can we do that?
Sure.
Whoever wishes to start.
Ms. Linda first.
I went to school with Dory, we called him Dory, um, and we'll have fun when it's a Friday, it was with him. And we just known each other as teenagers throughout the years. And then we met up in the magazine, and it's sort of a little bit of a memory. And then just, uh, they lived off of Corpus Christi from local home. So we lived in the city limits, then we came to the water road was when we was out, but then when we came back into the city limits because we did the expansion, then, uh, that's when we decided to run for council. So that's when, you know, we got to see a little bit more of him. He had that fabric tenor. He had done well for a while, and then, uh, you know, it, it came back. We have a lot of memories of living in Elmendorf for all these years and just the good family connections that we walked down, and we've known each families for so long. So, you know, we're always, uh, to their family and, uh, you know, it's gotta be with them because this is a very difficult time.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I had the privilege of meeting him as well, spending time with him. Uh, he always talked about the family, you know, and I think that's what made him special. The last council meeting we were here before, the only things he said is, you know, he said how the family is always asking. He was more concerned about everybody else's family than, than himself. That's what made him who he was, uh, you know, but he will be a man who will definitely be missed in every sense of the word.
I can agree with Councilman, uh, right here. Uh, the short time that I met, uh, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Garrett, he was great. Uh, he was a very determined man. And, uh, I guess you could give compliments for that. Residents from Elmendorf, yes, yeah, please. I remember so well, when we decided we were going to this program tonight, uh, I don't go too much into detail, but, uh, it came to the time where we put one out to pass out those, uh, particular, kind of, out there. I saw him, and he was, uh, looked kind of bad, talking, uh, to us, uh, and, uh, I had asked before, uh, a couple of, he said, oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. And, uh, that night, uh, apparently he asked Mayor to go with me to see Mr. Garrett, pretty very well. Well, he was very, uh, and we did have, uh, ten of, five of, uh, because he was a great man. I think he was a great man. In fact, I knew him by only, uh, since he started, uh, this issue. Also, uh, I would answer, uh, uh.
Um, so I only knew Mr. Garrett for a short period of time as well. Um, it was very interesting when, uh, the elections came up and we put in our names on the ballot, he called me. I didn't know who he was, but he reached out to me and explained who he was, and he was just so eager to, uh, to learn, and he had so many questions and what advice I could give him. And, I mean, from an older gentleman like, like that was, was an honor to be able to speak with him and to talk to him about that. And that's one thing that I saw through, throughout his whole time, is he would always say, you know, I'm still learning, I'm still learning, I'm trying to grasp on, and it's such a great, uh, inspiration to know that, you know, even where he was in his life, he was still learning to learn, he was still eager and determined to, to learn something new and to be out there and better with me. And he's so passionate about that, you know, I really admire that. Uh, so I was, uh, to a point, uh, I also am like a lot of his family at this time.
Some, some know, some, some don't. Uh, but Dory is related to my wife. So he's been in the family for, for quite some time. Um, he called me up one day, asking me to, to join here and all that, and I, I gave him all the spiel on everything, and I was glad that he was willing to do this. Uh, a sad thing that, that happened to that part of the family this, this 2019 year that just passed, is right before Christmas, Bonnie DeLeon died, passed away, was his mother-in-law. Two days before, I said, did I say that wrong? Thanksgiving, I'm sorry. The day before Thanksgiving, Bonnie DeLeon passed. Two days before Christmas, he passes. That, 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 that family was hit twice hard. And I just asked for Jesus Christ to be with them, comfort them, provide the peace that they need in their hearts to, to get through this. Uh, I know a lot of his family. I've known his, his, his son, his daughter. I actually work at the hospital in Florisville with him. So the remembrance is, is there constant. Uh, he's gonna be missed, uh, but no more suffering for him, Lord. It's, it's over. So my condolences to all of that family. Yeah, I just ask that they, uh, that Jesus be with him and comfort him through all this.
He was a good friend of mine. We lived very close. He didn't have internet. He was calling me constantly about all this stuff, the water project. I think I took that whole sixty-page on my laptop and he went over that whole thing, and I printed out some of it. He, he was interested in things, and he had questions, and I kind of knew why he wasn't getting internet. He knew what was important.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, he was a good man. Uh, he got, we were on vacation in Colorado, I guess in October, and, uh, I mentioned we were gonna be in Estes Park, and, uh, my phone rings, and he's right down the street. I said, I'll come all over, so we visited up there and wondered how two, two guys from Elmendorf ended up at such a nice place like we were in.
Cody? You know, I echo what, uh, what, uh, I just realized, it's, uh, that what struck me is his wanting to learn. And, uh, and I echo what Mr. Jukes says. Uh, he was interested in everything. He was, he was up here two, three times a week at least, uh, asking questions. It was a wide range of questions. He wanted to know a little bit about everything. And I, I followed him, uh, and tried to get, get up to speed and know what's going on in the city. And, uh, I really appreciated working with him, wish it could have been longer. My, my heart goes out to this black man.
All right. Not only the family in your group, but also Legoria. I was in Legoria's, Legoria's chambers earlier today, but wasn't able to speak about this, because I didn't know about this, exactly what we're gonna be doing. So I texted Bailiff to notify him, and he did, and he was very appreciative of what we're doing here. Because, yes, Elmendorf is a small community, but this is also family. Look what we do in the park. Look what we do in all these different functions and things. So when we lose someone, regardless of here or out there, or where it may be, we mourn, we're concerned about the family and what we can do. So anytime that there is an issue with a family or something that's going on, let us know, so we can be there for them. As far as the chaplain's involved, yes, we're chaplains with the police department, but we have this thing that says City of Elmendorf. So we are here for y'all. So I'll leave you with that, and I thank you for your time for this mayor and for everyone here. Thank you.
Will call?
President.
What number five? Mayor in the Senate, present.
Mayor Daniel Hoppe is present.
Mayor Mike Gonzalez, present. Police Department update. Ah, I skipped, I skipped something, sorry. This is citizen participation, Miss Minnie's law. I've forgotten, that's my problem.
It's okay. I just have one question.
Yes.
And if the City's go owns the water tanks or they're up for sale, the ones that we have?
We do, we do, and they're not for sale yet.
Are they had soon to sell them or?
We haven't really talked about, I mean, that's something council thinks, uh, as we've been before. A lot of it has scrap, maybe scrap value to it. But that's something in council, which, uh, who thinks, uh, uh. Police Department update.
Real brief, Mayor, I appreciate it. Real quick, do you wish you had the data on the December's, uh, stats, real quick? I want to say that we winded up, uh, the whole year of January, first, 2019 to December, 2019, three thousand four hundred and fifty-three cases total. And any questions on this particular data? Everybody should have a copy of the racial profile for 2019. Everybody should have a copy of the, uh, book of, uh, keepers of the box.
Somebody's taking that unit, let me go. It's still there.
All right. So this is the racial profiling data for, uh, 2019. Any questions on this racial profile? There's copies out there, committed. Grab a copy, it's also gonna be on our, our, this, uh, website, or, I guess. Any questions on the racial profile?
Mayor, see council comments?
The only thing that I noticed is, I haven't seen a couple of people here now, like, see who they are, if they're, if they have some special guests. I see this gentleman here, and this is a lady right here.
Oh, my name, oh, introduce yourself. Uh, my name is Victoria Barboza. I'm working, uh, with Mike, I'm an attorney. Uh, so this morning I was doing, uh, the, um, municipal board, and so I'm seeing these people.
Very good. Sir.
My name's Clayton J. Levin, senior.
Mr. Mayor?
We're good to go, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Linda?
I'm good. Thank you.
Moving on to general business consent agenda, items one through three, we can make a motion at one time to pass adoption and approval of city council managers from December 17, 2019. Adoption and approval of the city council managers from December 19, 2019. Approval of the previous month's bills, paid and financial reports. There are motions for one through three?
I make a motion for one, item one, item two, and item three.
I'll second.
Linda seconds, all in favor?
I have an observation, sir. Uh, I saw a donor donation of five thousand dollars, which is interesting. Who was a generous person, that, uh...
On the financial report, the donation for five thousand, who is that from?
That's from, uh, Halliburton.
It's from Halliburton.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions? All in favor?
I like to abstain, unfortunately, I did not need last minute.
So we have three, four, and one abstaining. Trace it. Moving on to general business individual consideration, discussing possible action regarding nominations and appointment to fill the vacant city's council position at Place Two for the remainder of the unexpired term. Mr. Cody?
Okay, that's fine. Um, so, so the, um, you have two choices basically. You can decide not to appoint, or, and Cody put it enough, and, or you can decide to appoint somebody. The benefit of appointing somebody is that right now, the general law in Taquay City, uh, he has to have four people to, to call a special meeting. And so if anything were to, if we were to have a special meeting and one of you weren't available, we wouldn't be able to do it. The other benefit is that if something were to happen to, uh, somebody else, move, or, you know, if it's something worse, they would be required to do a special election. Fortunately, for, if that were to be the case, we're close enough to the next general election, which is May 2nd, that we wouldn't have to worry about that because the time of doing all that stuff, what gets to that time anyway, that's the next day that we have to do it. Um, but I still think it's beneficial to go ahead and appoint somebody, so we can have special meetings in the coming. But the remainder of the unexpired term is, it's confusing, but basically what it says is that you have to appoint somebody, they actually serve until the next general election. So that if you appoint somebody, they'll actually serve until May 2nd, and they would have to run on May 2nd, or somebody would run for that position. And this is all an issue of timing. And because of the, the timing that, uh, Mr. Garrett passed, that it's that way. If it were a little bit further down the road, we were beyond the election, you know, to be on the ballot and all that kind of stuff, then we wouldn't be able to do it. And then the appointment would be for a longer term. But because of where we are at the clock, or on the calendar actually, it would actually only be till, till May 2nd. And then we'd have to see what happens in the election. If not, if people, if nobody runs for that second spot, then the council would have to appoint somebody.
So what you're saying is, uh, if they're going in May, he'll have an extra year, because he ran for a year, a two-year, right? So he would have to run for a year?
So you run for a one-year term, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then that gets it back on track.
And then back to the, to the...
Yeah, that's correct. It back on, sorry, I didn't think that. Any other questions? No, sir. Motion for four?
I make the motion to nominate and appoint Tommy Hicks, um, to fill the Lincoln City Council position at Place Two for the remainder of the unexpired term.
Second?
Second.
Full of seconds, all in favor? All four. Mr. Tommy, if you would like, you could say something, and you're welcome. Is he welcome to join us up here now?
Yes.
Do you want to swear him in?
Swear him in.
You might be well.
Let's go. Let's go. We get the language. Okay.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to say something too, but I guess before we get started. I've been a part of this city for quite a while now. I have filled seats before for people that have passed on, like Dario. And I'd like to, you know, fill that seat as he would, you know, just like anyone else, ask him questions and be curious, and do things for the community as he would. You know, that's just kind of the way I was when I was on council many years ago, whatever. I don't take it lightly. I really don't run for office. I, I gave up on that some time ago, but I will fill a seat and take up the slack where it needs to be. If somebody else wants that office or whatever, they are welcome to it. But it's not my intentions to stay a politician for life. I'm not a politician. But I, I do appreciate it. And I, I appreciate the council's support, you know, and it means a lot to me. From having been involved with the city, still being involved with the city and whatever, it means a tremendous amount to me that you guys lay their trust in me. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Raise your hand. I, Tommy Hicks.
I, Tommy Hicks.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I faithfully execute.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
Of Alderman Place Two, Elmendorf, Texas.
Of Alderman Place Two, Elmendorf, Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do to the best.
And will do to the best.
Of my ability preserve.
Of my ability deserve.
Protect.
Protect.
Defend.
Defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, sir. Yes, sir.
And I want to say that, uh, Tommy's always been there for us when we ask him to fill the position. And, uh, he is an asset as a council member and to the community. Since he, even he's not on council, he's always helping the community. So I say thank you, and I appreciate everything you do for us, Tommy. Thank you.
All right. Did we make a motion for four? Right?
Yes.
Did we make the second or not? I don't remember.
Sir, it's done.
All right. Number five, discussing possible action regarding the creation of a formal policy governing the annual gift card presentations for the best holiday gift lighting and incurred in beautification of the city. This was something that, that, um, I had talked with Cody about. I never really paid attention to it in the beginning, but city funds were being used, uh, to do this, and I believe there is an account or something that it comes out of, Mike?
There should be. It should be put in the, Jake, if it's put in the budget, it's not...
Yeah. So being that it was like that, I, I wanted everybody's input here, so that there is no confusion on anything, it's passed by the council, we can do it, and, and that's it. That's, that's all this was, was to clarify and get this out and done with and over. So with that being said, um, Ms. Linda, do you have a copy of your thing?
Yes.
Do you want to read it?
Uh, sure. Okay, and, uh...
This was a suggestion that, that she came up with.
Okay, the Elmendorf Christmas Decorating Contest, for council to nominate a chairperson at the meeting, at the same meeting where we designate who will be the National Night Out and the Christmas in the Park Parade chairpersons. Then the chairperson will then nominate a co-chairperson and a resident as a committee member to help with the judging. And then we designate the area of the judging, which will be within the City of Elmendorf limits, and then designate how much the prize will be. First prize, and these are just suggestions, but a hundred dollar gift card and a yard sign, designating that they are the first prize winner. Second place, a seventy-five dollar gift card and a yard sign. Third place, fifty-dollar gift card and a yard sign, and then seven twenty-five dollar gift cards for the runners-up. Uh, we have to choose the day and the time of the judging. The judging will be Friday before the December council meeting, and the judging will be between six to ten, I mean, to nine that day, or nine, rather. Advertising decorating the contest would be on the website and the marquee, or I don't know if we want to do it any other way, uh, Wilson County or whatever, but I just put those two on there. The winners will be announced Monday, the week of the council meeting, and the presentations will be made at the December council meeting. So we'll present them here at the council meeting with their certificates and their signs.
I have a question. Would this be, would those, uh, two events do the same thing? On two events, the Christmas at the park and National Night Out?
It'll be the, we'll, we'll pick the chairperson the same day that we pick the chairperson for National Night Out and the Christmas chairperson. And we usually do that, when, Cody, January? No. When do we usually do the co, the chairpersons? Right after May election?
Yeah, pretty much right after, like in June.
In June. So in June, in other words, but I, I just, yeah, it's usually, because that way we already have the new council members in already, and we can consider them for the positions as well.
Now, when the chairperson nominates a co-chairperson, would that be, uh, a fellow city council member, including a member of the, uh, resident community?
Yes, yes. So there would be three, the chair, the co-chair, there's a citizen.
Chair and co-chair are council members?
Yes.
Okay.
I think Andy and I did this for, uh, either four or five years. This was my, uh, four years, and then this was my fifth year.
And Andy and I did it before that, I don't know how many years.
Right.
So it's been for a while.
Okay, let me finish with my thought of this. Uh, I enjoyed it very much. Andy enjoyed it very much. And I remember that maybe three years ago, and I brought it up over here, and I, we mentioned, Andy and I, how happy we were, because we had an experience. We had passed out already, like, eight gift certificates, and then we didn't find any more houses that would be very well decorated. We had pretty much covered, and then we, we're coming on the street, or this house, old, had a few decorations. I said, Andy, those people, they have the Christmas feeling. I think you should go and give them money? They're all in for the wonderful, incredible bliss, this. And he said, yeah, yeah. The experience was so great that, that those people received us, they hugged us, and almost tears were there. I said, ah. So the other one that we had left, the one we have left. And it was like and that's what Christmas is all about. Make people feel good, appreciate each other. My suggestion, I mean, to continue what we did. And I would suggest that if we have, you know, maybe the same ten gift certificate that this give out someone, you know, for the best, and also we could maybe start to go to the merry. They're not like they are always. And I mentioned this to Mr. Weller, and he was so excited to do that. We went to our house, and it was Maria Flores. I remember that it's been built, so houses in the, very small house. I guess people must have been very sure that I did. The door was very open. But the lady, someone said that people in the house. But that house looks beautiful, it's luxurious. And I went around finding out who he was and called, uh, Mr. Weller, said, "We better just announce to someone, so..." "Oh, yes, I know that way." So, uh, he didn't call me, but "Hold on, you got to take care of that." And that's my, my Christmas story. My Christmas experience, but, uh, I would...
Is this the end of the session?
Yeah. So that's a suggestion. If you guys like that, fine. I would suggest the same.
So do you want to leave it on this?
Yes. Send that to me, Mike.
So I guess, like, uh, what I would ask for next would be a motion for the idea that Linda would...
Well, I think we should all have our, uh, uh, opportunities.
If you want, yes, you can.
I think Manuel and myself.
Okay.
And I suggested contests, which is why I put first, second, and third, but, I mean, I don't know if we would call it contests if we're just giving out ten twenty-five dollar certificates. I don't know what we, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, you know, I'm suggesting.
Yeah, because I hear what you're saying, and I think it makes a lot of sense. Why don't you do something like top three can be done by the committee, and then there's six of you, so each person can also pick their favorite. So it'd be like mayor's choice, place one's choice, place two's choice. And you just have to communicate and make sure that you didn't do the same one. So that way, if Polo wanted to do it because of some type of spirit thing, that he gets actual to do, and each one of you could have your own choice, at least one left. I don't know, then you'd be like chief's choice or something like that.
What's he's choice?
Oh, Cody's choice, then whoever, but that way it would give each one of you a way to follow your own criteria, and then you'd have the three that would be counted.
I actually like your idea too. That one sounds good too.
Can you write it down?
We could write that, we could absolutely write that out. So if Linda would send us what she started with, and Cody and I, sure.
And just keep it.
It would be a resolution.
Yeah, I think it'll resolve. A resolution.
I make a motion that we go
With what Mike said. All right, second?
I'm, I'm all over.
Manuel, second. All in favor? All five.
So who's, so who's got the extra one? No, 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 so you, you got top three, and then you've got six, that's only nine.
You want to give the top four?
We'll give it.
Okay.
That's fine.
There you go.
So who picks the top four?
The committee. The committee.
The committee.
Right.
All right, item number six, discussing possible action regarding resolution one dash sixteen dash twenty twenty, that's one R. Authorizing the Elmandorf Economic Development Corporation under Texas Local Government Code, section five zero five point zero one two, to provide funds to the city of Elmandorf for the purchase of the Elmandorf City Park. All right, yeah. You all don't know how many years we've been after that. Way before I was here. So it's been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Their motion for six.
I make the motion to approve resolution one sixteen twenty twenty one R. Authorizing the Elmandorf Economic Development Corporation under Texas Local Government Code, section five zero five point zero one two, to provide funds to the city of Elmandorf for the purchase of the Elmandorf City Park.
Second. Question, all in favor? All five. Item number seven, discussing possible action regarding the approval of the contract language between the Elmandorf Economic Development Corporation and the East Central Independent School District for the purchase of the land. Did I just read that wrong? Is it twice?
No. No. No, it's two. For the same.
All right, known as the Elmandorf City Park. Okay, number seven, is there a motion for seven?
I, I'm on the second.
Manuel made the motion, second?
I'm making the second. Before the vote, uh...
Yes, Tommy, second.
Sure. So, the, first of all, the reason why they're separate is because the first is the funding, because the funding is coming from EDC. So that's what you took care of. Now the question is, do you want to enter to the agreement? The agreement that we have from East Central right now is a basic real estate agreement. In fact, there's actually some blanks that have been yet to fill in. Uh, there are things like escrow, like, um, you know, the fund, what do you call it, the fund that, um, if you don't, it's not the escrow, but if you don't take it. Option fee, the, the option fee, all that stuff is blanking right now. So I don't think it'd be anything onerous or not that to worry about it. The only thing that I wanted to point out, the only things I want to point out to the council is there's a couple provisions in there that normally would make me a little nervous in a contract, and, and this one they, they really don't, and I'll explain why. But the, the first one is that there's an agreement in there that if anything is found at that piece of property that would come up, then the city will not only, uh, basically, it will not only hold them harmless, the school district, but it also defend them if something come up. At the EDC meeting, somebody made a joke about it being a dead body. Actually, I don't care about their body. What I would care about would be if there was something like environmental or something that was buried on that piece of property, and then they came back and like, there was a circular investigation or something like that through the EPA, then the city is representing that, well, even if the school district did it, then we will say, so y'all are free and clear. We'll defend it, we'll pay for it, we'll do the cleanup, we'll do the legal, we'll do everything for it. Normally that would give me a little bit of pause. The city has operated this park for, um, a quarter of a century at least, and then, you know, it was a school before that. So, I mean, the chances of something like that being out there are very, very slim. Definitely less than one percent, but I just felt like I would, I needed to, to point that out to y'all, that that's in there, one thing to, uh, to be considered with regard to the, the contract itself, so. But like I said, I don't have any reservations if y'all want to go ahead and approve it, but it's still pending. The other issue, which is basically akin to the other one, is they're offering a special warranty. I always feel more comfortable with general warranty, unless I'm selling the property and I want to give a special warranty, so I understand why they're doing it. Basically what that means, if anything comes up regarding the title of the property, they will defend it only if it is their title. So if it's somebody who held the title before them, then the city would be on their own, which, that could be, because they've owned it for so long, that could be getting into some records that are a hundred, a hundred years old. So that could be an issue that may be a little, maybe a little cost to the city. I have no concern that the city would end up losing the park if something like that were to come up, because like I said, the city's operated it for twenty-five years, it's been open and obvious, there's equipment out there, the city's taking care of it. So I don't think that anybody would have any claim to that property in the long run, but because at, at minimum, we could just do adverse possession, because it's been open and obvious for that long. Uh, plus there was a school on it, it's kind of hard to miss. But, so I'm not worried about it, but there could be the possibility of expense. So I just felt like I don't need to notice that.
In my opinion, that would become more of an issue if it was, uh, more recently transferred, or if it's changed hands more recently, but this has been, this is in the school's hands for a long, long time.
What do you mean by giving it to East Central? That's where it came from?
I, I think so. It was, or it was actually the entity before East Central, uh, I believe.
It was like...
Special School District.
Number twenty-three.
Something like that. Or something like that back in, like, nineteen ninety-nine, or, or something like that, so. Go ahead.
I have an observation and question. On page two, the top, where it says the prize, it would be, and this is, let me make it clear. It would be a hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred.
Yes, sir.
Right.
That would be the top over here.
Right.
Silence, don't, right?
Right, yeah, no more. So take less than we'll, we'll do it.
Okay. Yes. Oh, my question.
All right, so we had a first and a second, all in favor? All five. Yep, it is ours. Number eight, discussing possible action regarding the application for a wastewater certificate for convene, con- convene, what?
Convenience.
Boy, I got tongue twisted there. Convenience and necessity.
Convenience.
Convenience.
It is convenience.
It is convenience.
Convenience.
Boy, now you've got glasses on.
Wait till you get home, huh?
Huh? I feel like I'm already... There's, is there a motion for eight? You want...
We're going to do like a little presentation.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Because, um, we had, uh, and you'll recall, we had applied for a CCN for the Hickory Ridge subdivision for DR. Uh, and that DR was paying for it. We did reach an impasse with Public Utility Commission, uh, because they needed a copy of the executed development agreement in order to show that we have actual customers coming online to justify our request. Uh, but the development agreement is still not signed, and the timeframe of our submission for, uh, the CCN is dwindling. So I've been talking with our engineer, Gary Montgomery, who's going to take over in just a second, uh, about an alternative uh, on the CCN to actually expand it, uh, to encompass our city limits and maybe a little bit more. Uh, that way we can show proof, uh, to the Public Utility Commission of our, of our customer base and ability to service them would be through the wastewater plant we just bought, not the wastewater plant just on, that will be built over on Dickie Clay. So Gary, if you want to kind of give the pros and cons of what that would look like.
So the main driver of the Hickory Ridge CCN, where their development was, that was a request purely from the developer. Whenever we turned that into the Public Utility Commission, they came back, like Cody said, and said, "We either want the development agreement or we need proof that you've submitted a discharge permit, TPDS permit, through TCEQ." We couldn't produce either one of those because we didn't have a signed developer's agreement, and we haven't submitted a TPDS permit at that point. In mid-December, the city took action to purchase the San Antonio River Authority plant off of Cassiano Road. So now you own a plant, the tran, the permit is in the process of being transferred, it will take thirty to forty-five days to, to get that done. So Cody, as he said, we were talking the other day about this, and, uh, maybe it makes sense to expand to the city limits. You have a permit, so I think we can meet that request from PUC. Uh, at some point in the future, you may want to, or you probably will want to create a capital improvement plan and impact fee studies. And there's a lot of things coming down the road, but that's not immediate needs. So the light blue, uh, is your current CC, uh, current city limits. Kind of has that pink color, uh, border, but, uh, one of the things that we were just talking about, I'll go point it out. Hopefully everybody can see. So this is Alamo Junction Rail Park. Right now, the San Antonio Water System Sewer CCN ends at Richter Road and Old Corpus Christi Road. This is, uh, Alamo Junction Rail Park. We were talking about, we may want to move that CCN line from your city limits to Richter Road, so you don't have no man's land in between saws and the city limits. So that would be one thing for the city to consider, is do you want this strip of land also, if you want to cover your entire city limits with, with the, uh, certificate of convenience and necessity? Now, you already have a water CCN, a sewer CCN, uh, it really creates, um, no immediate obligation to you. There is an obligation to serve at some point if you have an active request, but that's all at the developer's expense. You bring in a development agreement and figure out how to serve those tracks. But you do have, you will soon have a permit that's in your name, you've already closed on the plant, so we think it's a good idea to expand to the CCN, uh, to the city limits line, and then consider going to Richter Road and Old Corpus Christi to, to cover basically the rest of Alamo Junction property that they have ownership of.
Kind of to expand just a little bit on why we're talking about this is because the deadline's coming up on our, the application that's already been filed, that DR paid for. And since it's so limited over on Dickie Clay, um, basically, we'd have no way of accommodating what the PUC is asking for, so that would end up dying on the vine. And that would be money wasted, so we want to try to come up with a way to make sure that we could not let that die out and make use of it. This is what we're, what we're thinking about. Now, there'll be additional costs to expand it to this, to, to that extent, because it would require, uh, a mailout to, um, every property owner that's in that area. Uh, and to get, uh, the additional, uh, all the additional paperwork together to amend the, the permit application, everything. Gary, you're looking at another ten.
It was ten-five.
Ten thousand five hundred.
I talked to Cody, that every property owner in that area would get a notice in the mail, so that would have to be mailed out. Talked to Cody, and he said that, uh, him and his staff could, could do that mailing, so that saves a pretty good amount of money on our side. Now, the other thing that I want the public to understand is, uh, there's a, that notice that they would receive, that's a few, if we started today, it'd be a few months down the road before they would ever receive that notice. But basically what the notice shows is that the city is wanting to expand their sewer CCN or create a sewer CCN. It would have a map of the area, and they would have, it has the language in it, if you have any questions, who to call. And there's also an opt-out provision, so if they have a large enough piece of property, we're not mandating that they have to be in the CCN, but it's, if they don't, uh, respond to the notice and say, "I want out", they would be in the CCN if it was granted by the Public Utility Commission.
So if we were to expand, would that meet the requirements that they're asking for?
Yes. The, the main requirement was they wanted to show that, wanted you to prove up that either you had, uh, an ability to serve, so at that point you didn't have a plant, but now you have a plant, and we can show, show them the documents that we submitted to TCEQ, like, Monday?
Yeah.
For the transfer of the permit.
And as well, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but also I know VP was asking to become part of the city at one point?
Yeah, that's probably not going to happen, just based on conversations we've had with the city of San Antonio, because they're in their, their ETJ.
Okay.
But, I mean, it would give us, if we're taking that area in the CCN, uh, to, to Richter Road, that would give them the ability to, if they need sewer service to connect into ours.
Right.
And then again, any, anyone building in the Alamo Junction on that side of the line
Right.
would be able to get serviced by, by us as well. There was actually some, uh, uh, potential business that's going in over there, that is interested in
Yes, sir.
sewage service.
This is not like an annexation, correct?
No.
At all.
Okay. One thing I want to point out, legally, uh, under the water code, we do have exclusive, original exclusive jurisdictions to provide sewer service to, within our city limits. So we have that without a CCN. But I mean, I'm not saying don't move forward, but I just want to let y'all know that inside the city limits, unless we do something, we give it out, it's ours in the first place. Uh, the addition would be the piece of property that Gary talked about extending from city limits to Richter. If you want to do it.
Any negative?
If we just did the areas outside the city limits, then we still wouldn't be able to approve the PUC, because there will be no development agreement.
No, you'd have to do city limits. I'm talking about the addition.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just trying to say that legally, you already have the right to do that. I'm not saying don't do a CCN. A lot of cities go ahead and do the CCN. Say you already have a water CCN, so I'm not saying don't do it. I just want to let you know that within the city limits, you're not, or you're not afraid of anybody coming stealing anything within the city limits, but to do what Cody's talking about, you're going to need to at least start with the city limits and then move out of there.
Any negative downfall to this that, that, uh, PUC, Gary, or Mike?
No, uh, from my perspective on the engineering side, I mean, we deal with CCNs all the time, and, um, it, it offers an extra layer of protection. It keeps the developer from, from coming in and buying a hundred acres and saying, "I want to put in my own wastewater treatment plant." You're in the wastewater business now, so it adds an extra level of protection in my...
So in the long run, basically, revenue towards...
Correct.
Is that encroaching on San Antonio CCN or not?
No, it, it would be the common line between, so we would go over their CCN, but not over there.
We couldn't do that. We couldn't go over their CCN, would not without either getting released from them or getting into a fight, and we would do that.
Any other questions? Is there a motion for eight?
I make motion, pass, um, item eight, on the wastewater certificate for convenience and necessity.
Second.
What's the, what are you, are you doing outside the city limits and then off of the park up to Richter?
Yes, sir.
I mean, city limits.
I'm sorry, yes.
Got a little section out there up to Richter Road.
Up to Richter Road, yes.
Manuel was the first, Tommy second, all in favor? All five. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Full seconds, all in favor? All five. Seven fifty-two PM.